Thank you for joining us at the meeting for October 3rd, 2023 Montesereno Regular City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few helpful tips of council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow group participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and be able to speak to the council. Only attendees using those new applications can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes must be taken by oral call.
Thank you. And what we'll do to, sorry, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City of Montesereno City Council to order on Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2023 at 7:01 PM. And perhaps we could start with Captain Clint Tada leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, indivisible, and every one of its citizens.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Alahi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Present.
And Mayor Mekachar?
Present. We have a call. With that, we'll go to orders of the day. If any council member would like to change the orders of the day. We're good. All right, we will continue on as set forth in the agenda. And we're going to start off with the presentation. With that, Santa Clara County Fire Department, this is their annual presentation.
Correct. My name is Mark Schumate. I'm a deputy chief with Santa Clara County Fire Department. With me, I have Deputy Chief Jason Polarski. And we are here to present your year in Montesereno Fire Department. Next slide, please. So this is a video, short video that tells a little bit about our fuel crew and what they do is they go out and they remove ladder fuels, cut fire breaks to give us a chance in large fires to catch up with a fire and slow it down and gives us a chance to put it out. So this will tell you a little bit more about that if we could start the video, please.
Sure, we can give you a minute to.
On the website, on the actual presentation.
Here.
Are you guys okay with?
Yeah, you guys started for, start again. And take the subject. Given the state of all the forests, the only way to really improve everything is through.
We're focused on communities that have their high levels of sustainability. So we'll work with the city planners and town managers. Sometimes they have projects in minority that they want to.
And we'll have a proper feeding based on those requests and start to calculate those projects.
This is a fairly big program at this point, so we're doing a lot of first entries in areas that maybe haven't had anything done in the last years or for very first time that they're doing work done on.
This area was identified as a strategic protective fuel bridge charcoal road as the access fire route that runs through. We then took that road and extended it 100 feet off each side of the road to thin out the vegetation and then convert forest parole and do a break in or something. I would think it's a video of fire. Offers us the ability to use those brakes to either stop fire or control the fire growth or spread. And so the value of these like fuels crew is a lot is preventative. There is a risk of it still remaining well, where they didn't actually assist with fire by any efforts and what we call block up or that's controlling the smokes and a lot of pot after than anybody in the fire has got through.
So we're giving planning for the new projects in future years. We're giving maintenance maintenance. So we're going to be revisiting a lot of these projects every three to five years and then regrow and having a central crew to do the work in various areas that helps to ensure that that maintenance problem as opposed to just kind of being pushed back to our side.
Well, primarily the gas is peppered on the public right away because where the missile group is primarily focused. We do have a lot of cases where the public right away. And last one of those is nowhere else out there that now it's a risk for all of us living in this area. Just because we have a name here, we have a social influence. It doesn't change the fact a lot part is still a risk. We're in our county. And so we really want to try to educate constituents and win the consent partners from district to grid. I'm just trying to help mitigate the fuel problem that they might have. But we will do one more to mitigate it in the public right away where we can.
Okay, so I don't know if it was last year or the year before, we had talked about bulldozing and completely rebuilding the Keto Fire Station. We have since changed our plans, one, because we built our new redwood station up at Redwood Estates. And it's huge. I don't know if you've had the chance to drive by there, but drive by there, it's huge. So what we decided is we are going to do a remodel on the current fire station at Keto. It fits the property. It fits the property much better. So that's the decision that the fire chief made to remodel instead of rebuild. Unique hazards, as you're all very aware, Montesereno is full of wildland interface, a lot of narrow roads. On the public right of ways, this is what our fuels crew is out doing is thinning that vegetation to give us a chance to slow down and catch a fire if it happens in the area. So they're kind of bouncing all over. But they're going where they are going to do the most good for the most people at this point. And vegetation doesn't stop growing, so it's a nonstop process of, it's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You know, by the time you finish painting it, it's time to start painting it again. So next slide, please. Okay, here's the public safety report. So for the year, total calls for Montesereno was 291 calls. Of those, as like every year, most of them were EMS, 138 EMS calls, 99 service calls, 30 fire alarms, 10 fire calls, which didn't amount to a whole lot for total dollar loss for the year in Montesereno was a little over $38,000. So that's nothing. So as far as response times, our response times for Engine 78, which is based at Keto Station, the average was about four minutes and 34 seconds. So very good response times. Going a little farther out, so obviously when we get a fire call, we get multiple units. So the times go up a little bit, you know, the unit's coming from Los Gatos to Saratoga or even Seventh Spring Station in Cupertino. So the times do go up a little bit on the stations that are a little over out from Montesereno. But for the unit that is normally housed here in Montesereno, four minutes and 34 seconds, pretty good response. As far as let's see. So if you look at the incident counts by month, that is in the top right-hand corner. Montesereno as a city is pretty even as far as our responses. Month to month, it doesn't change a whole lot. But you can see the one spike there that was in January of 2023, and that was the storms. That was wires down, that was flooding. You know, everything that we respond to when it's a very stormy day and the wind is blowing like the wind was blowing back there in January. So that's the one spike there that you see in that column. Other than that, I gave you the total, so you can go to the next slide. So as far as capital improvements, we purchased a crew carrier for the crew. This allows all of them to ride in the same vehicle. And one for safety, we know where everybody's at. We don't have multiple vehicles trying to navigate these roads. Two, they can get briefings on their way to and from their assignments. So it kind of saves time when we get up there rather than having to exit multiple vehicles and everybody get together and brief for the day. You can do the briefing as they ride up in the crew carrier. And our second vehicle that impacts this area is breathing support. So breathing support allows us to fill bottles. So if we go to a structured fire, we used to have to go to a fire station to pick up a trailer that had filled bottles in it. Now we have the ability, there's a compressor onboard, we have the ability to fill bottles on scene. And we've had that for years, but our old unit was, you know, aging a bit, so we just purchased a new one and it should be here anytime. It's been on order for a while, but the supply chain issues, things are running a little slower than they normally would in previous years, but it's just about finished. And then we purchased three new engines that are on order. One will be Engine 73 out of Saratoga, Engine 76 out of Los Altos, and then Engine 80 out of Campbell. Then as I said before, we just the crews just moved in maybe two weeks ago into our Redwood Fire Station. And it's beautiful. And I encourage you, if you get a chance, drive by up there. It's a beautiful fire station. But it's big. It looks huge from the outside. The other thing that we're really excited about is in about a month, we'll be moving into our new headquarters on Dell Avenue in Campbell. We've outgrown our current building. In fact, we're split up into fire preventions in one building that we lease. And the rest of us are in the main headquarters is owned by the fire district. So we've been looking at this property for a while. They've done a ton of work on it. And like I said, we should be moving in in about a month or so. So we're really excited about that. Next slide, please. Then as far as big projects we've been working on, County Communities just purchased and implemented a new CAD. The previous CAD was about 40 years old. So you can imagine how much technology has changed over 40 years. So we're excited to have the new CAD. There's been some bumps in the road as there is with implementing any new system, but we've worked well through those. And in the long run, this is going to be a huge difference for us as far as dispatching and getting us out the door, getting the right equipment going right away. So it's going to be a game changer once everybody's fully trained and used to the new system. And the second project, as far as IT, we just implemented a new record management system. And this is going to allow us to extract data, better data than we were with the previous system. We've been using this for EMS calls for years now, and we just implemented the system department-wide. So that'll be, again, allow us to provide better, better data for all of the cities and towns in our jurisdiction. Next slide, please. And then these are just some projects that the Posona Fuels Crew is working on. They just completed Cypress Way, Hernandez Avenue, Withy Road, Wood Road. They're finishing Pierce Road Corridor and Phillips Lane, starting Highway 9 between Saratoga and Los Gatos. And they've got proposed projects on Hicks Road and Prospect Road. One thing I want to mention with the fuels crew is, it was kind of hard to hear, I know, but we got a grant to start this crew up. Well, the grant is now ended and the crew is now funded from our general fund. So County Fire realizes the importance of having a crew like this for fire protection. And so we are going to continue to fund this. It's a part-time, it's only during fire season. But along with the vegetation management portion of it, there is a response component as well. So we're not ready to send them out of county, but in county, we can deploy this crew to go out and mop up. And what that does for us is they have the capability and the tools to do the mop up portion. That allows us to get frontline rigs back in service and get them back in their areas where they can protect the citizens rather than being stuck on the incidents for a longer period of time and out of service because they're tied up working. Next slide, please. And then a little bit about community education. We've completed ready, set, go workshops in Los Gatos, Saratoga, and Los Altos Hills. And Be Ready, Be Prepared for Disaster is coming up on October 25th at the Saratoga Senior Center, and those events are available on Eventbrite. If you would like to attend. And next slide, please. And that's all I have for you. Unless there's any questions for me.
We have any questions? Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Alahi?
Thank you for doing a great job today. Fully critical of all this thing. This environment is not that easy to work with, I suppose. You're cleaning up all the public space because you can, the private you can't. Now, there's a Villa Montalvo, I believe. The private area, I go hiking most of the time and it's full of ground fire, but I don't know who can take, who would take care of that? Since it's a private thing.
So if it's private property, so we, one of the things we do is the engine companies backed up by our prevention division go out and inspect properties every year. They're called Bluey inspections. So if there's a property out there that has a homeowner or a landowner that isn't taking care of their property, and that means doing their, you know, 100-foot of clearance around structures and that sort of thing, then that's something that we will flag, turn into our prevention division, and they will follow up on that. So if there's a property out there, private property that you're aware of, that can be divided into our fire prevention division and they will follow up on it.
Villa Montalvo is a good property, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we should just take a hike there one day and check it out.
Okay, we can do that. I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Yeah. One of the points that you brought up was that Montesereno has very narrow roads. In the event of a fire and you can't go through our roads, do you have the ability to get helicopters or airplanes to come in to help?
Yeah. During fire season, those are going to be automatic dispatches. There's, you know, local responsibility area, there's state responsibility area. And there, anytime a fire threatens state responsibility area or is in state responsibility area, CAL FIRE is going to respond, and they're going to respond with a full response. Their aircraft, engines, battalion chiefs, you're going to get everything from CAL FIRE and then some that we would be able to send you because we can't send you aircraft. We don't have any. But yeah, we will be first on scene likely, especially in this area. This is our jurisdiction. But we will be backed up by CAL FIRE and the aircraft will be in the air in the event of a fire.
So are they coming from Green Hill View?
The helicopter is now at Moffitt, correct? They just, they just purchased the new helicopter. So there was some question of.
It's still, it's still in Alma right now. So you'll get your helicopter will be at Alma right there. They are looking at relocating it. They were working on a contract with Moff Field that has since fallen through. So but currently, as of this fire season, you have a helicopter up Alma, which is Highway 17 in Lexington. And then additionally, you get two fixed wing that come out of Hollister. But that aircraft gets here really quick.
Yeah. You're welcome. And then just as far as to answer the question of the narrow roads, in addition to our regular fire engine that you see at like Keto Station, we have wildland apparatus. And the wildland apparatus is narrower, taller. We also have what would look more like pickups that would, you know, get up those roads much easier. Now, the thing that we always run into is obviously citizens are coming down the roads as we're trying to go up the roads. And that's, you know, an issue everywhere we go. So, you know, we do our best to allow egress for the citizens to get down as we're trying to respond to the fire.
Thank you.
First of all, deputies, thank you and your team for all the great work you're doing. It's tremendous.
Thank you.
You mentioned the cleanup that's going on along Highway 9 between Saratoga and Los Gatos. There's one thing that worries me tremendously about Highway 9. You probably guess what it is. It's the 83 eucalyptus tree in the middle. Is there anything you're going to do about that or how should that be?
Well, that, it would depend on, you know, is it on public land? Is it on private land? I'm not this isn't my division, so I don't have all the answers as far as the fuels crew. But if it's on public land, then obviously we're going to be able to, you know, do our best with that, just like we are on Charcoal Road and the other projects that we mentioned. But yeah, eucalyptus is a concern everywhere, just because it burns fast, it burns hot.
Is that something you can look into? Who owns those trees? I think I may know the answer. Who owns the trees?
I'll tell you what, so I'll pass Villa Montalvo and I'll pass that along as well for the the eucalyptus tree store fire prevention division, and they can take a look and determine who the landowner is.
It may run into a small organization called Caltrans.
Yeah, yeah, we're familiar.
Other questions? I will also commend you for the work that you do and you and your teams. And I cycle up into Elserino Open Space, so I think I've seen your crews up there. And I don't go on Withy Road. It's a little steep for me still, but I'm more on overlook and then coming down Hernandez, et cetera. So that's good to see them out there.
Yeah, they're doing good work.
And, and when you said Saratoga and Los Gatos, well, Montesereno is right in between the two. And I know that we've put out on our e-blast that there's going to be work that's being done on that. So our citizens are expecting that.
Right.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, in fact, the same division that oversees the fuels crew, that's also our PIO shop. So they try and do a good job of getting the information out to the citizens so people are aware of what's going on out there.
Well, that's good. Anything else? Well, thank you for your annual update. And hopefully next year, the numbers will be lower.
All right, sounds good to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move on to oral communications. At this point in time, any member of the public can say, can spend up to three minutes talking on any item that is not on the agenda. And it must be related to city business. And if you're attending here in chambers, please approach the podium. And if you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised and no one's at the podium, so I will close oral communications at this point in time. And then we'll move to written communications. Have you distributed all the written communications that were received?
Yes, nothing new has been.
Nothing new. All right. With that, we've got a consent calendar and there's items two, three, four, five, and six. On the consent, item two is approved to September 19th, 2023, special and regular city council meeting minutes. Item three approved the warrant list dated October 3rd, 2023 in the amount of $55,698.19. Item four is the resolution to adopt amendment number one of the joint powers agreement and cooperation agreement to undertake or to assist in the undertaking of essential survey activities pursuant to Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Item five is approval of the Community Resilience Program Capital Projects Grant Agreement. And item six is purchase of a city vehicle. Would any member of council like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item six.
Like to pull item six? All right. Councilmember Turner?
Item four.
And you'd like to pull item four, which is the JPA agreement? Anyone else? No. So we've got we've got items two, three, and five. And what I'd like to do is open public comment on these items. If you are appearing in chambers, please approach the podium. And if you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
Your hands are being raised.
No hand to raise to no one approaching the podium. We will close public comment on the consent calendar, items two, three, and five. And at this point in time, I would be looking for a motion.
I know that we approve items two, three, and five of consent calendar.
We have a motion. I'll second it. We have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 500. With that, do we have a staff report on item number four?
Yes, good evening. I am Daniel Perkins. This is the planner.
Yes, good evening. Um, I am General Perkins, the City Mayor. And the City of Monteserino entered into a joint powers agreement with Santa Clara County in two thousand and fourteen. To allow the county to receive an additional federal CDVG and home fund. For the unincorporated county areas. As well as cities within the county that do not qualify to receive these funds directly. Which are cities with a population of under fifty thousand. These funds are used to address housing and community development needs, primarily benefiting low, very low and extremely low income persons within the county. A significant portion of these funds, um, are used to provide services for the homeless population. As well as maintain low income housing units throughout the county. As part of the Chinese program, they develop an annual action plan. As well as a consolidated plan every five years. And those are part of the planning and reporting requirements, um, to the. Federal Housing and Urban Development Department. This amendment would revise section ten of the existing agreement, which addresses compliance with updated legislation and regulations. The modifications to this section are proposed based on direction that the county has received from. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. That completes the staff report and I'm happy to answer the questions.
Um.
So.
Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, so we have been talking of this program, you said, since twenty fourteen or seventeen?
Seventeen fourteen was the first agreement and it was renewed in twenty seventeen.
Okay. So have we ever, ever gotten any grants from this contract? And so how much?
So the, the county receives the annual grants, the agreement.
So we don't.
Correct, because Monteserino has a population of less than fifty thousand. We don't qualify through the, um, federal guidelines for receiving the money directly.
And if we don't qualify. Why, why is it in our agenda? I guess I'm confused.
Uh, Councilmember Turner, the, so the county and the cities with less than the fifty thousand population entered into a joint hours agreement. To pool those monies together that the, um, cities could have gotten and they use those for programs throughout the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Uh, what I'd like to do at this point is then open it for public comment. If you're appearing here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
Your hands are raised.
No hand to raise. No one's at the podium. We'll close public comment. On item number four. And bring it back for any discussion and or emotion. We've got a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. With that. We get to go to item number six, purchase of city vehicle. And with that, I believe we've got a staff report from our city engineer, Mr. Darryl Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, just a brief synopsis of the, uh, item of worry tonight. As you recall, one of the goals for staff that was provided to us from last year, council was to. Seek and purchase a vehicle for the city. Uh, for the last about two and a half, three months, we've been scouring the county and different, uh. Di- di- different, um. We, we talked to Ford, we've talked to Buick, we've talked about every, um, folks that you can find out there, we're actually trying to distribute trucks. We talked to the state. Agencies who typically provide trucks to local agencies around your, like, our sanitation district. And we've been. Very, um, hard fought to try to find any vehicles that are available, even with the last jurisdiction, jurisdiction that I was at. We had a very difficult time finding security type of vehicles for both our police departments and our. Public Works Department. Some cities are stating that's one and a half to two years out on their orders right now. Due to a lot of the, uh, microchips that we have a shortage of right now that you may be aware of. And other shortages around the state. So. Um, we have finally found a vendor here locally at Los Catos, the Buick dealership that actually has a mid-sized truck that meets our needs. Um, the other, um, vendors that we talked to, we just have no inventory right now. So. Um, we're bringing before you tonight. An item that's within the budget that you approved last year in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, forty-five thousand dollars, which was approved by council a few months ago. And this falls within that, uh, that cost frame. So. I'm here to answer any questions on how we came to this point or about the vehicle or what have you. So.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Law.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always curious to see if you've negotiated with county residents. Whether we give you any discounts. Twenty twenty-four is coming up also. Uh, that might lead. Lead, lead, lead to further reduction in prices. This is a truck. I, I was just doing internet search and it's Fremont. Uh, G O T settings, something like, but not similar. Uh, for about thirty-two thousand or something. Uh, I don't know if you want to expand or something, or if you've already done that. Some other dealership has a same truck. Uh, their price is around thirty-seven or thirty-eight. But they might have.
Each, the dealerships can actually target all the other dealerships around the whole state and they can swap trucks. So this one, actually, they're going to swap a truck from another dealership. Somewhere in the state because it's not even on site right now. So. Inventory is just really short right now.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Senator. What about gas? How much, how many miles we got in this year? Do we have a better choice? That's what gas does there? Well, I don't know if this is a, but.
This is, it's a, it's an eight speed and I think it's a, it's a four cylinder. So we'll get a little bit of gas mileage. It's not large. Large engine on this, so.
Thank you.
It's a hybrid.
It is not a hybrid.
So what happens when you ban gas?
Well, I don't think any of us will be here when that happens, but.
Look at the review.
Excuse me? The price tags on all the electric vehicles are a lot more expensive than the gas vehicles at the moment, unfortunately.
Other questions before I open it for public comment? No? Uh, with that, um. I'll open it for public comment. If you're here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you are appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand.
Your hands are raised.
No hand to raise. I will close public comment. And, uh, bring it back and, and I will make a comment and, uh, not a question, a comment and say that I know that Silver Valley Clean Energy bought. An F one fifty Lightning and I think they paid in the order of ninety thousand dollars. So I think we're being fairly frugal with this vehicle. And, um, I'll. This is now a question. Are you also including badging on it? So will it be seen as a Monte Serena vehicle?
Yes, sir. We will have details on both doors.
Wow.
Um, and lights that flash to keep us safe in the street.
And maybe this is a question for our city manager. Have we had, to the best of your knowledge and belief, have we had a city vehicle before?
No, Mayor, we have not. No record of, uh, any previous city vehicle.
Well, well, I, I know that last year, so there's another comment that, uh. Interim city engineer Don Wimmerly and I were traveling around when. Our residents were complaining about water. Overflowing and, and that sort of thing in the, uh. In the late December, January timeline. So this will help us. Give better service to our residents, our citizens. Um, with that, I have no more comments. Any comments from anyone? No? Uh, then perhaps we could have a motion. To approve the purchase of our first vehicle.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Well. Now we're on. To unfinished business. Number seven, adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Monte Serena. Amending Title Four by adding chapter four dot two-two, establishing the city's concealed carry firearm licensing process. And prohibiting the carry of firearms in sensitive places. Do we have a staff report on that?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, as you might recall, on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we introduced the ordinance of the city council of the city of Monteserino. Amending Title Four by adding chapter four point two-two. Establishing the city's concealed carry firearm licensing process and prohibiting carry of firearms in sensitive places. Uh, the town of Los Gatos. Through the chief of police is responsible for issuing concealed carry weapons permits in the city of Monteserino. And they have asked that we adopt this ordinance to ensure that we have consistent procedures with. Our process and the town's process. It also allows the town to use a new, um. Program on the, what their website to make it easier for people to apply. And Captain Todd is here tonight. He'll talk a little bit about that. Um, when I'm done with this part of the item. Um, the ordinance as proposed will set forth the general requirements for obtaining the, the, um, license. It will, uh, define terms consistent with state law and it will, with limit. Limited exceptions prohibit. Car- concealed carry firearms at sensitive places, which in Monteserino means places of worship, city hall and schools. Uh, recently, one of the reasons for the delay, there was a bill that was proposed, S B two. That would address, um, some of the issues with sensitive places. That bill was, um, signed by the governor. And will now go into effect on January first, twenty twenty-four. It does provide for the ability to limit concealed carry weapons in some sensitive places. Uh, but staff believes it's important to have additional clarification in our ordinance as well. So before you tonight, this ordinance will establish the process for obtaining the license. And limit concealed carries on, in those sensitive places. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, so. My question is, we passed an ordinance before and maybe I missed the change. If any, to that.
So we introduced it.
Oh, we introduced.
Back in August.
Yes.
And then the process is after the introduction, then it comes. Forward the next week, typically the next meeting for, for adoption. We haven't done that yet. So tonight is the adoption. And if approved and adopted, it will go into effect in thirty days.
Okay.
So it's the same ordinance that you considered back in, in August.
Okay, and, and we delayed that at our prior meeting. Uh, or to. An intervening meeting because we wanted to, to understand how S B two was going. Is that correct?
S B two and also what the town was doing with their ordinance as well. So with that clarification, we're, um, comfortable moving forward.
Okay, um, I think we're going to hear from Captain Tata, but before then, are there any other questions for? Uh, ours, the attorney. Councilmember Turner.
I do have some questions. Um, when we first considered this resolution last August. I abstained from the vote. Because I have thought at that time, there were just too many issues that were to make an intelligent decision. Now that Senate Bill Two passed, yeah, this is the legislation expanding California's existing concealed carry weapons law. Um, that was signed by Newsom. The state laws is covering the issues addressed by our ordinance. So after reading S B two this weekend. I have some questions, I guess, for you. I believe that the state law, in this case, S B two, preempts whatever we vote on tonight. Is that correct?
It doesn't necessarily, well, it wouldn't preempt it because it's consistent. So we are, it is consistent with, um, S B two. And there it is, or perhaps it's not consistent because we haven't addressed all of the issues that are written in S B two because there aren't relevant in Monteserino. Um, as I stated, we only have. City Hall, the school and the church. We don't have some of the other, um, sensitive places that are included in S B two. So what we have proposed tonight is consistent with that. Um, and it. It works in conjunction with S B two.
So when conflicts exist between the state and the local ordinance. How will you resolve this?
If there were conflicts, then the state law would control. But in this case. Um, the majority of our ordinance is actually dealing with the process for obtaining the license. And that process is really the town of Los Gatos's process. Um, it is not a process that's outlined in S B two. Um, necessarily. If the state law changes, that would mean that we would need to come forward, um. If it may created an inconsistency, we would have to come forward and amend this ordinance.
So. At the last meeting, you talked about school versus school zone. Hey, what, what do we have in our ordinance? Are we looking at school zone or a school?
We're just talking about the school.
So it's not a zone?
We did not create a separate zone. Let me find the definition for you. So we just. Include the school and it means, I'm sorry, I do apologize. It does mean school zone as defined in Penal Code, section six-two, six point nine.
Yes.
So it's the entire.
So that's different than what that's been too.
I don't believe so. Let me pull it up for you.
So, so. S B two talks about the school zone as well.
So it does, and it refers to the penal code, the six-two, six point nine of the penal code. That's the definition. Let me pull that up. So six-two, six point nine, uh, provides that when a person holds a valid license to carry a firearm. They are in the area that is not in or on the grounds of a public or private school. Um, but it's within a distance of a thousand feet. That would not prohibit it.
Yeah, so, so, so I think when I read this, right, the difference is that S B two makes exceptions. For lawful transportation of firearms and ammo. Our ordinance does not. So I cannot legally go down Dave's Avenue with a box of ammunition. If I were concealed carrying, if I had a concealed carry permit. That's, that's the difference. And, 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 and here's the question that I have. Uh, when we first. This, discussed this ordinance, we said we were going to be consistent with Los Gatos. Yeah, right? However, I understand that Los Gatos agreed not to enforce this ordinance because of the threat of a lawsuit. From several firearms organizations. And so they backed off. So this is also true for San Francisco. So if we have the police department for Los Gatos and Monteserino. And Los Gatos have, have different ordinances, when they will pull those ordinances. Then it defeats the purpose of why we're doing this. I, I guess I'm trying to understand. Are we going to enforce this ordinance?
So our ordinance is the same as the town of Los Gatos. They did adopt theirs. It is effective. Um, they agreed not to enforce it. So we have a, uh, our ordinance has the same language as the town's. We can decide not to enforce it as well if we would like to. At this point, we're not doing that tonight, but it is something that we could consider. Um, it will be up to the Las Gatos, Monteserino police to enforce this ordinance, both in Los Gatos and in, in Monteserino.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be consistent with the Los Gatos ordinance. So that. You know, the purpose of doing all of this was to be consistent. For the Monte Serena and Los Gatos Police Department.
So what you could do is adopt the ordinance tonight. With the direction that we not enforce the sensitive places provisions. Um, in Los Gatos, it's until such time as there is a, um, final decision in the courts on that matter. So we could decide, we could. That could be part of the motion for tonight.
Hey, we're, this is the question period, not the comment period. Do you, do we have more questions? Uh, Councilmember Turner, more questions?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
No.
Yep. Uh, with that, um, what I'd like to do, uh, is perhaps, uh, Captain Tata, you'd like to maybe. Um, tell us a little bit about. How your, how the Peridian system. how your, how the Peridian system and application is working in Los in Los Gatos and your experience to date, and if there's been any changes or problems in what we could expect though when you were to go live with the Monteserino side of that.
Yep, thank you very much. Clint Tata, Captain uh Support Services for the Los Gatos Monteserino Police Department. Um, so the police department is currently live for the town of Los Gatos residents uh for carry concealed weapons permits uh applications. We currently have that site up and running um off of our website. We do use a third party um application um service provider, which is Peridian. Um, and that is um available to the public. Um, that is where they would sign up uh for that. It is right on our website. If you go to our website under the Community Services tab on the homepage, there's a section there that talks about carry concealed weapons permits. And there we have a dedicated webpage um that outlines the phased process of the application uh process that we go through um from both the Peridian um aspect of it to the background investigation to the other requirements um that are required as a part of the process. Um, the town of Los Gatos municipal code is also posted on that website as well. Um. And then if you, there is a section there as well, right underneath that for PDF of the Monteserino uh city ordinance as well. But uh once that does get adopted, um and does get pushed through and um if it's the powers to be uh all of you, then uh we will go ahead and activate that and then begin the process to start reviewing the applications that do come in from um residents from the city of Monteserino. Uh, currently, right now, we have put a hold to any Monteserino residents um on processing any of their applications until that uh city ordinance is up uh and adopted.
Thank you. Um, counsel, do you have any questions for Captain Tata?
Hi, Captain. Uh, I know it's just all relatively new, but can you share any numbers? How many people have applied?
But I'm sorry, I don't have that tonight. Um, as of last month, when we first initiated um the initial process, we had uh just under ten interests uh folks that were emailing um asking some just some general questions. Uh, we then directed them to the website. And so we had uh just about under ten uh different folks from the city uh town of Los Gatos. Um, so I I I'm assuming I'm making assumption here that uh we have just just about that as of right now. Um, and that number is gonna definitely fluctuate up or down as we move forward or not.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lahi.
There's really two parts to this. One is to get somebody who applies for the concealed permit through the system so they get their life permit. And the second part is if they show up in a place you don't want them to show up, somebody's got gotta go to a restaurant. And then they could come back and say, you want to do my second amendment rights? I could go there. But at least by getting the permit process, when you're obtaining some information on the details of the get it. Uh, and maybe the third part is, which you would just say, if my second amendment right, okay, a concealed weapon period, I don't need to go get anything. But what what do you do if somebody has a concealed weapon and does not have a permit? Is that, why why does she have a beetle hooks or some scratches? Let's put an arm in that.
Do you want to take that? Um, okay, so the police department, obviously, there are several components to the ordinance that's before you tonight. Um, one of which is that the discussion uh was about earlier was on the sensitive places aspect of it and the definition of what that entail. Um, the other parts have to do with that the cities need to have an established process in place that's uh provided under the legislation of the Bruin decision um at which we need to adhere to and follow. So the ordinance itself captures a broad view of just different parts of this new uh evolving process called the CCW process that we're in. Um, as far as the way all that looks to us as a police department, um from an enforcement side, we look, obviously, there's local municipal code, there's state codes um that go with it from a violation of what had been discussed earlier um and or some of the discussion that's been taking place as well when it comes to somebody who does not have a uh carried concealed weapons permit. Then we would default to what the state code requirements are on whether or not they're in violation of, you know, possessing a firearm, do they meet the requirements, do they legally have the ability to, you know, have a firearm, is it an open carry unloaded firearm? That's a whole difference. Um, you know, legal standing and whatnot for for that situation.
Well, this might make it a little bit simpler for people to at least have gone through them, the permits and uh for the department, so you don't have to go through a secondary investigation.
Yeah, I would I would turn to uh the city attorney just to get their recommendation on moving forward with the process for Peridian with in correlation with the city ordinance.
So the the process that's outlined now um is different than the process that used to be followed because of the changes in uh the law. But us, this is the first time we'll have an ordinance that will spell out what that process is. So it will make it much simpler and easier to understand, I think, for most applicants within the city.
Any other questions for Captain Tata? If not, then thank you very much. And what we'll do is I'd like to open this for public comment. Uh, and if you're here in chambers, approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised, no one approaching the podium. I'll close public comment on this. Bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll start off by saying, um, I'm I was a little concerned that we had to delay this and there were the issues that were facing Los Gatos. But now with uh SB two giving more certainty to that, um, I feel comfortable uh that we can move ahead at this point. And I know that that there we do have some citizens that would like to have a concealed carry and I'm responsive to that need. And I'd like to be able to uh meet that desire um without undue delay. And since there's a robust process in place that Los Gatos has, um, I would like to see this uh moving forward uh as soon as we can, well, once it's approved. So I will be supporting this this motion. Uh, whoever makes the motion.
May I make a?
Yes, you may.
I I will, I will support this motion if we make exceptions, just like SB two, for the lawful transportation of firearms and ammo. But our ordinance looks not. So this will be consistent with what Los Gatos has. As long as we're consistent with what Los Gatos have, then I will support it. But if we're not consistent with Los Gatos, then I will not support it.
Let's take a look at it and see what if where we would need to make a change, if you guys wanna.
Oh, sure. Um, you know, I were, I don't like to bounce around, but I think this is very important. And and since we've got Captain Tata here, I'd like to ask him a question. As I understand it, I may not have a concealed carry, but I'm allowed to transport a uh a weapon, a firearm. I can, between my residence and someplace else that I want to go to, I can transport that lawfully in my vehicle. If I was to pass within a thousand feet of a school, so would that be allowed if I'm transporting it versus if I'm walking down the street and I've got a firearm on my body that is a concealed carry? Then I think it's not allowed. Could you just talk about that briefly?
So I I think you defined it uh perfectly. So I think that's a a very good assumption um based on from an enforcement standpoint. I think if somebody is transporting a firearm legally and correctly in accordance with the law um and ammunition, um and that it's, you know, within the parameters of what the penal code allows. And that's traveling through that one thousand foot zone for a purpose of to and from, from going to a firing range, going and doing that versus carrying concealed on their person while driving through that zone, it they're two different situations. And so I would agree with you a hundred percent on that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, uh, Councilmember Lahi.
Yeah, I was also looking at the exceptions to the possession. What are you, you're talking about the same thing? This is a E. Uh, this is the uh person delivering an unloaded firearm that's authorized for state or federal. Uh, this one, sorry, a person lawfully possessing it, uh, this is a person lawfully possessing an unloaded firearm in a locked trunk or inside a locked container in a motor vehicle. So if they're going to school zone and if they have it in their trunk or wherever, then they're okay. But if they have it on them, then they will not come with an exception.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, other questions for Captain Tata? No? Um, City Attorney Powell.
I, as Captain Tata mentioned, I think that the ordinance is clarifying you have to have it in, you have to be possessing it in the sensitive place and driving through it to get from point A to point B. That would not meet that definition.
Other comments? No.
So so under this, let let me just be sure that I know I understand what I'm voting for him. So I I think um what you're, what you just quoted uh is state law.
Where is part of this?
The number of ordinance, the ordinance says um that not not under this ordinance, if you go through a school zone, it's not covered by this ordinance, our ordinance. So. So I want to be sure that that we make that change in our ordinance.
So the or what the ordinance says is that you shall not possess a firearm within a school. We define a school as the school and the the school zone as defined in the penal code. This is where it gets a little confusing. And then in the penal code section six two six point nine, it talks about that it being in the building or on the grounds. It doesn't talk about the the area outside of the school. So that would be one exception to it where you could be within that one thousand feet and still be allowed to possess it. The other would be that you're going through the zone, the actual just driving through that, you're not stopping. That would not be a violation because you're moving through that point. You're not stopping in the sensitive place. So if you stopped and you were sitting outside on Dave's Avenue within a thousand feet, that could potentially be a violation. But if you're just driving down Dave's Avenue and you happen to have a firearm in your car and you have a license, that would not be a violation.
So I think we can agree to disagree. I think our ordinance here has no exception. And if if we vote on it tonight and the gun organizations will see it and their interpretation is the same as what I'm thinking, then we're facing a lawsuit. That that's all I, that's all, that's that's what I'm afraid of.
So in order to find the exceptions, right, in order to find
You're right.
In order to find the exceptions, you have to look at the penal code in conjunction with our ordinance. And that will give you the exception. And that's where SB two comes into effect.
SB two permissive, what our ordinance is not.
I I'm gonna go back. I mean, I read this from our ordinance and you're saying it's not our ordinance. Take a look at four point twenty two point zero four zero. And this means uh take a look at that, part one of this. Basically says if you get it in your trunk or then you're fine.
Or inside a locked container.
A person lawfully possessing an unloaded firearm in the locked trunk, trunk or inside a locked container in a motor vehicle, that's an accepted.
That would be on page five of the ordinance.
Four point two one, four four. Hopefully, yeah, I I think that works.
Yeah.
Right, um, we're still bringing it back to council. Any other comments uh on this item? No? I I just have one comment. So this has been agendized and it's been published. We have not received any comments on it. I would think that if there was a problem like Los Gatos had, they wouldn't comment on it by now. So it's just something I was just wanted to.
I I asked one more comment. I noticed you mentioned that you you comply with state law and everything else. But you don't say anything about complying with federal law for the restrictions. Do we need to put anything that federal law compliance is required?
I don't believe so. I believe, I don't know that there are any federal laws related specifically to concealed carry and um other than the second.
I guess.
Well.
So you ready for a motion?
I'm ready. We are, we are ready for a motion.
Okay, we'll move if we go ahead and draft this office.
So this is the uh, do you want, do you wanna read it your?
So it could, if the uh motion would be to adopt an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Monteserino Amending Title Four by Adding Chapter Four Point Two Two, Establishing the City's Concealed Carry Firearms Licensing Process and Prohibiting the Carry of Firearms in Sensitive Places and waive the reading thereof.
So moved. We have a motion. Second, we have a motion in a second. Uh, now this is an ordinance, so we have to have a roll call vote for this. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilshammer?
Yes.
And Mayor Megan Turner.
Aye, motion carries four one zero. Thank you. And with that, we will move to item eight on our agenda, which is the introduction and waiver of the first reading of either ordinance number NS two thirty eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Monteserino amending section nine dot zero seven dot zero four zero and repealing section nine dot oh seven dot oh five oh to revise the allow allowable hours for leaf blower usage. That's alternative one. Alternative two, ordinance number NS dash two thirty seven and an ord uh an ordinance of the City of City Council of the City of Monteserino amending section nine dot oh four dot oh four oh repealing section nine dot oh seven oh five oh to revise the allowable hours for leaf blower usage and adding section nine dot zero seven dot zero three five. And with that, do we have a staff report? May we have a staff?
Yes, thank you. Um, according to the California Air Resource Authority, the small component emissions from small offshore equipment such as leaf blowers and other landscape equipment has surpassed the emissions from light duty passenger cars. Um, because of this, in twenty twenty one, the governor signed AV thirteen forty six, which will ban the sale of new gas powered leaf blowers and other landscape equipment starting with equipment manufactured for the model year of twenty twenty four. The state um also has a program for landscape professionals um to purchase electric landscape equipment at a discounted price in order to encourage the replacement of gas powered equipment. On the city council had asked staff to look into potentially um banning gas powered leaf blowers within the city. And as um part of that, earlier this year, the um staff completed an extensive outreach program to inform the community of the environmental impacts of gas powered leaf blowers as well as to provide a survey um to solicit feedback from the community on this subject. The outreach program included a postcard that was mailed to each household. Um, notification of this um subject was published in the spring edition of the Peaceful Mountain Monitor. The um city's social media websites and the city website had postings um about the about gas powered leaf blowers and the link to the survey. And um the emails were sent to send to a list of interested parties as well as information was provided at the front counter of city hall. A total of one hundred and forty two survey responses were received. Of those, seventy two respondents stated that gas powered leaf blowers should be prohibited and seventy respondents said. and seventy respondents said that they should not be prohibited. The survey also provided residents with an opportunity to provide additional written comments on this issue. And the responses to the survey, including the written comments, are included in attachment three to the staff report. Uh, many of the comments received in the survey expressed concern regarding the noise created by gas-powered leaf blowers. So because of these comments, um, staff also looked at the currently allowed hours of operation within Monte Sereno as well as other similar communities in the county. Um, currently, Monte Sereno has specific allowed hours of operation for contractors and then additional extended hours that are allowed when homeowners are operating the equipment. Um, the currently allowed extended hours for homeowners, um, as well as, um, the allowed hours for other jurisdictions are detailed in the staff report. Um, in looking into this issue, staff also contacted, um, code enforcement staff from the town of Los Gatos as well as the city of Los Altos, as they have both had, um, bans on gas-powered leaf blowers for many years. And both jurisdictions reported that approximately seventy-five percent of their code enforcement complaints received are regarding the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Um, so based on the number of complaints, um, that both Los Gatos and Los Altos, um, received, it is likely that, uh, banning gas-powered leaf blower within Monte Sereno will have a significant impact on our code enforcement staff and require additional staffing to respond to the increased number of complaints. The staff report includes an estimated fiscal impact. Um, this is an estimate based on the feedback from both Los Gatos and Los Altos. Um, if the council decides to ban gas-powered leaf blowers, enforcement during the first six months of the ordinance would be informational only and courtesy notices would be sent to property owners when a complaint is received. Um, this will allow time for the community to become aware of the changed requirements and also provide staff, um, a better understanding of the actual, um, code enforcement um, resources that may be needed in order to respond to the additional complaints. And any additional code enforcement resources that may be needed will be included in the, included in the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. The two draft ordinances provided to council for consideration tonight, um, includes the first ordinance would not prohibit the usage of gas-powered leaf blowers, but would reduce the allowed hours of operation um, to allow them to be used from eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM on Saturday, and not allow any usage on Sundays or holidays. The second, um, draft ordinance that is attached to the staff report would also reduce the allowed hours of operation at the same times, but would also ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. So that completes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So, once again, I think what our process will be, will be to ask questions of staff. And then once we're satisfied that we understand, uh, what your, what the alternatives are, then we'll open it for public comment and then we'll bring it back for further discussion and emotion, one way or another. So that said, um, questions of staff, if you've got some questions? I have a, a quick question. So why didn't we include Campbell and Cupertino in the comparison?
Um, I do not believe they have a prohibition of, of the usage of gas-powered leaf blowers.
Well, I know that Campbell has what they call power tools noise ordinance, which I would think would be very similar to ours. And Cupertino does have a sixty-five decibel, um, limit also specifically for leaf blowers, but they don't prohibit gas-powered leaf blowers. I was just kind of curious, we went through all the statements, we can kind of skip two of our closest neighbors.
So the cities, um, included in the staff report, um, to compare the allowed hours of operation, um, we tried to compare it to cities that were more similarly sized from Monte Sereno.
Well, but we also put in Los Gatos, which is the same size as Campbell for the most part, attacked smaller. I was just saying, it didn't look evenly done and, and it was brought up that it looked like we were trying to skew the, the decision to be made one way or the other. So I just thought I would make that out. That's, oh, that was, your question was why it was done that way? Okay.
Yeah, start.
I've watched enough Jeopardy.
Councilmember Lockey?
I, I don't know if you're an expert on this, but I'm just trying to figure out, how long do these things last? Yes, uh, for your life span of what, your five years, ten years?
And can I, can I help you out with that? Only because I just looked it up. A well-maintained gas blower, gas leaf blowers expected to last ten years.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? No?
No.
So, the ordinance would, so this is a question. We would put the ordinance into effect, have the first reading, then we have the second reading, and then it goes into effect thirty days later. And then, the, just because we've got an, an ordinance in place, the effective date could be stated to be January one or February one or at some point in the, in the future, it doesn't have to be when the ordinance is, is, uh, becomes effective. It's what the date is, what you put inside that.
So long as it's thirty days after, it can be no sooner than thirty days, but it could be anytime after thirty.
Right, okay, okay. So we could put in an ordinance and then have it, have an effective date in the future so that our residents know this thing is coming and I gotta deal with it one way or another, but I don't have to deal with it today. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, the draft ordinances, um, both of, of them do include, um, an effective date, the standard thirty days after adoption. Um, if the council were to adopt the ordinance to ban the gas-powered leaf blowers, um, staff's plan was to provide only, um, informational enforcement for the first six months. So that would be effective.
Right.
But.
So could we put in an effective date of, say, January the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Then, we could have an enforcement date that could be, so, sorry. You explained that you'd have an enforcement would only be informational where a warning or something like that? Okay.
Correct, just information that there is a new requirement and that.
Right, okay. And then the actual enforcement date, when it's, you know, this is now, that could be, say, July first or could be six months later. How long were you thinking of having the informational period?
Six months.
Six months, okay. So we'd be targeting the beginning of our fiscal year, which is July first.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Those, oh, and so here's another question. I know that I did a little research on leaf blowers and I didn't understand before the difference between a backpack and leaf blower and a handheld one where there's no backpack. The ordinance doesn't differentiate between the two, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so the question would be, in the survey, did we differentiate or, or, or inform or educate our, the survey respondents that there's a difference between a, a backpack and a handheld?
We did not.
We did not, okay. Those, those are my questions. Uh, Councilmember Lockey, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a little bit deeper on the cost of, uh, after this, uh, ordinance, uh, about fifteen thousand dollar mention? That's in addition to whatever you're paying our court enforcement, court system right now?
Yes, so that was, um, determined, both, um, Los Altos and Los Gatos have both reported to us that seventy-five percent of their code enforcement cases are regarding the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. So assuming we would have a seventy-five percent increase in our cases, um, that is where that, um, estimate would develop. But again, it is just an estimate. We would use the, um, six-month sort of courtesy informational, um, period to see what our actual increased number of cases is. And then, um, from that determine what additional staffing resources may be needed.
Um, would it help to reduce the hours further or change the decibel level? I know we have sixty-five or seventy-five or, uh, for example, that should be possible. Same decibel level, it should be on sixty-five. You're losing hours with, get you more.
Would be cheaper?
Complaint, we do, I got it. Actually, this hour may be more expensive than people would have more hours to violate the ordinance. So you have to increase hours so that, so less hours.
Will we come up here?
Yeah.
I, I heard, I heard that. I talked to, um.
Yeah, this, this is question first of staff.
Let me, let me just, let me just ask her a question.
Well, then, I wanna, I wanna, okay, go ahead.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Um.
Providing it's a question.
Uh, did you check with the Los Gatos, um, city council or the planning commissioner? Because from what I understand, it is part of their ordinance that they don't enforce it because of the cost, is that true?
Um, not from the information we received. We, um, myself and our code enforcement officer met with the code enforcement officer for the town of Los Gatos, and they enforce it, um, on a complaint basis as well as proactively. Um, he actually came over here for the meeting with us from, um, Los Gatos.
Los Gatos?
Mm-hmm, and on, he had commented on his drive over, he jotted down three addresses that were using gas-powered leaf blowers on his drive here that day. So they enforce proactively as well as based on code.
Yeah, but, but I heard Los Altos, so.
Questions? Go ahead. So does he carry a decibel reader with him?
The complaints?
No, no, that the code enforcement officer in Los Gatos. So you said he, uh, just driving by.
And saw the usage of gas.
So he saw the usage of gas, but what about in terms of noise? I'm kind of curious how the Los Gatos handle noise, because there's, there's electric blowers that are over sixty-five decibels and according to the ordinance, you have to be fifty feet away with a professional decibel reader. So, do they carry one?
Um, I don't recall if he mentioned that, um, but he did say the complaints received are the usage of the gas devices. Um, we currently, um, in Monte Sereno, we get very, very few complaints regarding the noise level of leaf blowers or the usage outside of the allowed hours. So we really don't get any complaints currently on leaf blowers.
Okay, and reading through the comment, I did not see a lot of people commenting on the, on the, I'm, I'm gonna say on the sixty-five decibel level. Is that correct? Did I read that wrong or?
Correct, I think there were comments regarding how noisy they are.
Right, but not.
General, but not a specific decibel level.
Other questions? No? Uh, with that, what I'd like to do now is open it for public comment. Um, oh, actually, just, just a moment. Did we receive any written communications on this?
It was distributed.
Okay, so we did get, we did get one, one public comment on this.
We actually had two. Um, both were posted and one was emailed to you and one right before the meeting started was printed out and passed out to each of you.
Okay, and this public comment says, I would love to have gas blowers banned in Monte Sereno. The exhaust is very unhealthy and the air is extremely loud. Electric blowers are much quieter and are very efficient. Um, okay, uh, what, without reading the whole thing, um, what I'd like to do now is open it for public comment. I see that there are no members of the public here in chambers and we do have some people appearing remotely. If you would like to make a public comment on this, please raise your virtual hand.
We do have a hand raised. Just stop.
You have three.
Hello, there, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, um, um, yes, I just wanted to say that I was, um, yeah, I strongly favor banning the gas, uh, powered, um, blowers for the reasons you already mentioned, the pollution. Um, but I also feel like, and I know that my neighbors feel this way as we are outdoors and walking around, that the noise is bothersome and the noise is bothersome both because of the lau- you know, how loud they are, but also because, uh, they seem to be so constant, because everybody does the blowing at a different time. And when you say like between eight and five, then virtually all your daylight hours when you want to have open windows or be out in your yard, it seems like there's always somebody in the vicinity with a, a blower going. So, I would just like to encourage them to, to, you know, if they can enact something that's quieter requirement like the electric blowers, but also a decibel level. But even further than that, I would, I would strongly favor reducing the hours or even reducing it to, um, you know, several days a week rather than six days a week. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, what area of Monte Sereno do you live in and what lot size are you on? In your neighborhood?
Well, I live on Via Palomino. We have open space behind us. Um, so there's no immediate neighbors to the back there. What's the lot size? I'm not sure. Uh, you know, this house has been here since the sixties, so it's a good-sized lot. But, uh, yeah, it's, um, I can hear it from across the open space, Vineland, Via Palomino, Palis Verdes, you know, et cetera.
Understood. I'm familiar with the area. I just wanted to kind of put it into perspective. Um, because R one eight is the area that I live in and then we've got, which is, uh, small, the smaller lots in Monte Sereno, and then there's R one twenty, which is half acre, and then there's R one forty-four, which is uh, one acre. So that gives me, that gives us enough, an idea of your comment. Thank you. Um, thank you very much. Anyone else, uh, if you're appearing remotely and you would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand.
No, the hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Uh, with that, I'll close public comment and I'll bring it back to council for discussion. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a couple of comments. And, um, I guess overall, I see the state is trying to move in a certain direction and they don't want to get there all at once and they want to have a path to get there, uh, which is, um, getting rid of gas-powered, um, uh, leaf blowers and other things. And what I think we should do in the city of Monte Sereno is help our residents make an orderly transition. And I think the question was how long, what's the useful life of a leaf blower? And I think that in the ten years, there's certain times where you may have some major maintenance that you have to do, that it just doesn't sort of go for ten years, um, at least in my experience. And if I was going along and I had a, had a leaf blower and, and I knew that I was gonna have to replace it at one point in time or another, but we had this ordinance in place then, and I had some major maintenance coming up, it would help me make the decision to transition sooner rather than later. And it would create a reason for me to do that. So I think that's, that would help my decision to invest in an. That would help my decision to invest in an electric or battery operated leaf blower. Um and I think that if we had an effective date starting January one. Or January the fifteenth and then an enforcement date. Uh so information only or whatever warning and start on July one. I could certainly support that. Um I guess my other observation and comment is when I read through. The detailed comments that were made. Um I spent quite a bit of time on it because I wanted to understand why people. Are opposed to it and and want to keep uh. Gas powered leaf blowers and I found there was a lot of misinformation in there and I, and for example, a glaring one was. How quote dirty electricity is and it's actually, that's changed. Dramatically in the last few years as uh people here at the Dais know that are on. So are involved with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And then the other was on the comments about the battery powered, not having sufficient. Uh energy to do a one acre lot, but. They were referring to handhelds versus a a backpack type. Type equipment. So I was pleased that, you know, the ordinance covers both. So anyways, um. Those are kind of my, some of my comments on this ordinance. And what I'd like to see for an effective date in the ordinance and the uh enforcement date. Uh so that's what, with those changes, that's what I would be uh supporting. Other comments?
I I like your January fifteen start. I'd like to save the city about sixty thousand dollars if we go on here, then we don't do it. And the other reason why I'm suggesting that might be a more appropriate date because gas powered uh blowers cannot be stored like here. Which means electric powered doors are going to improve its standard and the prices also going to come down. And there will be better options available in a year than there will be next year. By the way, I lost my gardener. It's whether you heard about this, so. That's a different story. Um it isn't expensive and it and I don't think we need to save sixty thousand. If we can save sixty thousand dollars, spare it over a year. People have no choice, you know, well, a gas door might last ten years, so the average lifetime might be five years. A lot of it will be coming offline also. If you can put it out another year. And all the same dates, January fifteen twenty five, it's effective. And then six months you do a. Uh informational citation and then after that you can, that that gives them a chance to get a better lower and we save our thousand sixty dollars.
Well, you know, I'll listen to what more than half the residents said that responded to the survey. And I don't think it's gonna cost sixty thousand dollars. There's, it the the way I crunch the numbers. There's no way we could have the staff to do that. And I don't think you're gonna get that level of non-compliance. And as well, if you look at the at the. At the perimeter of Monte Sereno and and Los Gatos is is on the other side of that, touching it in most of it. Although it's the county in some places, that, you know, it's very difficult to say one house. On say uh um Poppy Lane is Los Gatos and then the next house is Monte Sereno. And start to in enforce things differently because of the jurisdiction. I think to have to be aligned with Los Gatos. It has a lot of value and I think our our compliance cost will go down. It's not gonna be zero. But I think that that's what our residents are asking us for. So I would stay with the. Jan fifteen twenty twenty four. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um there were hundred and forty two responses to the survey and uh. It was about fifty fifty, uh yes and no. That's eleven and a half percent of the household, so it's a really representative. Because typically with surveys, only people who have a strong feeling about it will respond. And the other, what is it, eighty nine percent, you don't care or didn't know about what was going on. So how representative is it? I don't know. So why are gas powered leaf blowers bad? Well, they they're mostly two stroke engines. And in those, only seventy percent of the fuel is burned completely. Um. The rest is is expelled in the form of carbon monoxide and other smoke related issue. Well, they're really very bad. Actually, last year, the smog from Source, as they're called, uh small off-road engines. Very appropriate name, Source, I think. Now, in California, the smog from Source passed, the smog from passenger cars. And that's that's hard to conceive, to to understand, but. The total number of emissions from passenger cars so passed by Source last year in California. The main reason I think is that cars are getting better. That Source are not getting better, no. Uh the mayor mentioned misinformation. Um let me let me pick a few of those. Um electrical leaf blowers don't work as well. Was one of the comments, but that's just a hundred percent wrong. They work very well. They're very effective. And they can do one acre lots. And I have some examples of that also here. Um electrical leaf blowers take longer. That's wrong also because the power to. They're just as powerful now, so it doesn't take longer. Another interesting quote is electricity to power leaf blowers comes from fossil fuel. That's wrong also. Uh ninety six percent of. Um our community is powered by Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So that electricity comes from clean energy, not from fossil fuel. Another interesting one, electrical leaf blowers have a higher decibel limit than gas blowers. No idea where that came from, it's completely wrong. So a lot of these no votes, I think were based on wrong or old information. And I looked at the Los Gatos situation also. My gardener does work in Los Gatos also. So earlier this year, I started talking to him about electrical blowers, electrical leaf blowers. And he said, well, I work in Los Gatos also, and he did not know there was. And he wasn't allowed to use that in Los Gatos. He did not know. So I found that a very interesting situation, so I talked to two other gardeners while walking my dog. I stopped by uh gardeners doing leaf blowing in Los Gatos, asked them. I'm not trying to get you in trouble, but do you know you cannot use that here? They have no clue. They did not know. So that's an interesting data point also. Um purpose, at least in my sample, not very scientific, three out of three gardeners did know. Um other cities in California have have a ban. It's a long list, actually. I'll only mention the ones that are close by. We have a complete ban on gas powered leaf blowers. Belvidere, Berkeley, Claremont, Los Altos, Los Gatos, Mendel Park, other alto. Beatmont and Tiburon have completely banned power, gas powered leaf blowers. So I would completely support this uh this ban in uh Monte Sereno and I agree with uh. Turning it on gradually. Thank you.
You go ahead, I'm gonna, I'm still thinking.
Well, okay.
I'm not sure where I'm going here.
Well, I am, so let me go first. Okay, so I find it difficult to take much action for this issue. We did a survey and less than five percent of our residents responded. And those that did respond were evenly split on banning gas blowers. So I don't see a mandate here. What I'd like to give our residents is freedom of choice, right? And and I also agree with SPAC, it doesn't make sense and and with um House of Member Alani here, it doesn't make sense. Who's done sixty thousand dollars a year to it for? So that's where I'm at.
Oh, you needed to give me more time than that. All right, uh well, no, 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 I I actually am gonna say some, if it's my turn. Do you want to go first or?
No, I go.
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna get with the fifth and ten, but you know, we we agree to disagree at some point.
Okay, well, uh uh first of all, I'll just address the sixty thousand dollar. I don't think it's gonna cost us anywhere. Close to that. If if it costs us sixty dollars, I would be amazed that the staff has been that much time enforcing this because. As the report says and as just the neighbors that I live around. Are, they're not going to be calling up and saying, hey, there's a guy using a leaf blower and it's made and it's running on gas, get out of here right away. And then we're gonna send somebody blowing up in our brand new city owned vehicle over to the house. So that, not a real, you know, and a gas dusting truck, no. I have a gas, actually, I have a hybrid, so I'm trying. But they're not gonna run out there and go. All right, you're using the gas, here's your ticket, thank you very much. Don't think that that's going to happen. Uh when I look, and I'm also going to preface this by saying, I cannot stand leaf blowers. They are to me the scourge of our neighborhoods. And one of the reasons that they are is because as the earlier comments were said. You got the first guy starts at eight o'clock in the morning, the next guy comes by at ten, the next guy comes by at one, the next guy comes by at four. And there's just an entire day's worth of noise. So, yeah, I would I would love to see some type of, man, if we can get all of the lawn care people to come into Monte Sereno on one day. Get it done and get out of here and go pester some other city, that would be great. But that's impractical, that's not going to happen either. So now I'm kind of left at this. Thought that a while ago, the city of Monte Sereno let the charge against plastic bags. We banned plastic bags from being sold or we we banned the use of of um. Vendors giving out plastic bags in our city. And we gave ourselves a pat on the back for that. You're looking at me funny. Yes, we did pass that resolution. Yeah, somehow, you know, we thought it was necessary to do that. It was a vote of solidarity, so but. It was a, it was a a proclamation that was just a show of solidarity and I'm willing to make a show of solidarity. To say, we need to get rid of these things and we need to limit their use, we need to come up with better technology. But that's just not gonna happen in the near term. And I just don't find that this particular ordinance brings a clear and present benefit to. A majority of the members of our city. As we talk about trying to reduce pollution, it's not like we have. A thousand of these things in our city that are being used on any type of frequent basis. We have. Let's say maybe a hundred or so lawn care companies that are coming in, using them for an hour or so a day. And then they're leaving. So we're not really reducing a whole bunch of, you know, I don't think we're reducing the amount of pollution. That we're talking about here because they're just not being used in our city that often. And um. And then the last part of this ordinance that. Some of the people were very upset about when I told them about it and we haven't talked about it at all. Is that this bans to use on Sundays for everybody to be able to use these things. So you're basically taking half of a weekend away from somebody who probably doesn't have a whole lot of time. Other than the weekend to do yard work to be able to use this. And if we do proceed with this motion, I would at least like to change that proportion of it so that people can use these. At a respectable, at at our previous time, we we set ten to five and I'd like to see it go back to that also. Um as we've mentioned, the state is going to be banning the sale of. Of gas powered equipment in January of twenty twenty four. When we first talked about this, it was nine months away. Now it's a couple of months away. So I don't think that there's something that we have to be really. You know, being on the bleeding edge of of trying to start a trend here when it's already happening. And all we have to do is continue to give carrots rather than sticks. And see if we can come up with programs to encourage people to get rid of their gas power. Find out if there's ways that we can work with some of the different um. Lawn care organizations and see if they are willing to take up uh some of the uh. Some of the programs that the state is offering. Maybe the city can look at getting a grant on something like this. But um. Yeah, I'm 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 with you guys in spirit, I really am. But I think the practicality is just isn't there right now. Um I'll I'll respond to dealing with the. Ordinance. Um what are the hours of operation again?
The currently allowed hours?
The currently allowed hours.
So um our current um requirements allow contractors. To use um gas powered leaf blowers Monday through Friday from eight to five. Saturdays from nine to five and not on Sundays or holidays.
That's the current ordinance?
Contractors.
Oh, for contract.
Then there's extended hours that are allowed for the homeowner or a resident. And um for homeowners or residents, Monday through Saturday has no time restriction. And Sunday and holidays is ten AM to five PM. So there's extended hours for homeowners to.
And that's under our existing ordinance?
That's correct.
And in the proposed ordinance, what did you put in? Or what was put in, sorry?
So the proposed ordinance, I'm. The B two. So the proposals would, for all usage, whether by a contractor or um. The homeowner or resident would be eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday. Nine AM to five PM Saturday and no time, um no allowance on Sundays or holidays. And so that is the currently allowed hours for contractors. So essentially, the draft ordinance would eliminate the extended hours for a homeowner.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh thank you for answering that and in helping me understand it. Councilmember Alani?
Yeah, I I I I agree with Councilmember Terry. I think my diligence always on ordinances, don't make ordinances unless you're enforcing. I think a lot of cities have these ordinances, but they don't enforce them. And we'll add just another ordinance that we're not enforcing. Uh and other than put something else into the intervention. If you enforce it, it costs money. It costs us money because nobody's gonna enforce it. And uh people, uh so I would suggest. Stay away from it. If you must have the ordinance, push it out another year, you know, you support it and then we can be twenty five.
Okay, let me give you some insight into e-bikes in the town of Los Gatos. The town of Los Gatos has an ordinance on e-bikes and that ordinance is not aimed at enforcement. The Los Gatos Monte Sereno PD, but it would be Los Gatos PD enforcing that ordinance. In the town of Los Gatos, they do not enforce it at all. They will not chase someone on a bicycle, on on an e-bike. They have a do not pursue policy. The ordinance is aimed at the parents so that they're aware of what's going on. So uh it's saying, saying that, you know, you don't agree with an ordinance if you're not gonna enforce it. I understand that, that's one perspective. I'm just saying, we have an example that is right next door, that is different than that. So that said, um I do not agree with the uh restriction. On Sundays for residents. I think it should be no more restrictive than what it is today. And I appreciate the the, you know, if you've only got, if you're working five days a week. And then you've got to do some some yard work and you can only do that on a Saturday, that takes away your Sunday. That's that's. That's way too restrictive from what I think the benefit is. So I would like to to propose a motion uh. For the option two, which is the. Is the ban on gas powered and have it with an effective date of January fifteenth twenty twenty four. With an a, an enforcement date, uh or sorry, with an information only warning. Of to June the thirtieth. And uh changing the, did I already say changing the hours?
Mm-hmm.
So uh.
And uh, changing the, did I already say changing the hours? So uh. And I think that would yield the benefits that we're looking for without the costs that we're looking for. Um, that would be my motion.
Okay. Can I ask a question on the motion before we ask for a second?
Sure, sure, the second first.
I think you can second.
Well, I was, I was times sort of for homeowners, the Sundays would be the same as Saturdays and.
Yes, the same as it is now. No more restrictive.
So um, I was gonna ask for that clarification. Thank you. Was, was your motion to leave the allowed hours of operation as they currently are? Which includes no time restrictions, um, Monday through Saturday for homeowners? Or just add, or just maintain the Sunday hours for homeowners, which is heading up to five PM currently?
And, and I will say, I was fine with the due weekday and Saturday time restrictions. I just wanted to reinsert Sunday again.
I, I had intended to say, keep it the same. On Sunday as per Saturday, because when you raise that as an issue. I, I'm sensitive to that, and I think that that makes it acceptable to me as well. But I, i- if there was a strong feeling to give residents more, more hours. Then I could be fine with that. But if, if everyone thinks that, you know, that uh, the hours during the week are fine.
I think nine to five is good.
Okay. So that would be my motion with the clarification on the hours.
I second your motion.
And this is an ordinance. So. Do we want to have any more discussion on it? Because sometimes, you know, you can make a motion, or you can, you can uh, second a motion just to. Force the, force the question or force more discussion.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Um, and before I do my amendment, the one other comment that I wanted to make is. We currently have a noise ordinance of sixty-five decibels in our code, correct?
I believe I'm looking it up right now. It's sixty-five decibels for.
Power tools.
Backpack leaf blowers, and I believe it's seventy-four handhelds.
So by. Moving the handhelds to sixty-five. And keeping the backpack at sixty-five, we have eliminated a good population of gas leaf bro, leaf blowers already. They're just, I mean, even today, they're not allowed to be used. The only. Leaf blowers that are able to function at sixty-five decibels are five hundred dollar, well, I did find a Home Depot one that was. One ninety-nine. It's an Echo one fifty-five. And, but there, there is an Echo three twenty at five hundred and twenty-two dollars, which. And, and this is the question I wanted to ask you. On the sixty-five decibel gas. Um, leaf blowers, do you have any research that shows that they pollute less because they've already put in? Or are they, are they doing as bad as the old ones?
I don't know, but I assume they're still two-stroke engine.
I'm pretty sure it's a two-stroke engine, though.
They're about, but I'm.
Okay. Uh, so, so now my, my friendly amendment is, I would like to see the, the. Enforcement date pushed out by a couple of years. Okay, we need to give people a time to really wind down. That six months is not enough time. And we're going to have effectively cut off any new leaf blower being sold in a couple of months. Now we need to get people. Going through their existing inventory and getting rid of it. And I don't think we're causing any harm to. Any harm that we're not causing already, but I mean, I don't think that we're going to be adding to the problem of, of two-stroke motors by pushing this out by. Anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six months and give people a chance to really wean themselves from these things. And I think that's a pretty reasonable compromise. So July one, twenty twenty-four, we could go July one, twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-six.
January first, let me see.
January one, not, not July one.
July one twenty-six is even better.
No, no, January one.
January one twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty years. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I would accept that friendly amendment.
So we're on. Okay. That works. Can we have a vote then, or, or do you want to call a vote?
So you're accepting the friendly amendment?
Yes, I am.
For effective January first, twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
So then um, you guys are accepting our. Motion is introduction and waiver of the first reading of ordinance number NS dash. Two thirty-seven in ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Serrino amending section nine point zero seven. Point zero four zero mechanical blowers when prohibited for contractors repealing section nine point zero seven point zero. Sorry. Um, okay.
Now you gotta start over.
I gotta start over. So introduction and waiver of the first reading of ordinance number NS. Dash two three seven in ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Serrino amending section nine point zero seven point zero four. Mechanical blowers when prohibited for contractors repealing section nine point zero seven point zero five zero mechanical blowers. When prohibited for homeowners and tenants to revise the allowable hours for leaf blowers usage and adding section. Nine point zero seven point zero three five mechanical blowers. Gas line power prohibited. So effective, um, so the hours as stated, um, or.
The reinstatement of Sunday.
The reinstatement of Sunday. And then effective date, January first, twenty twenty-six. Did I get that correctly?
Effective January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And there would be a warning period through January first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
December thirty-first.
That's true.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. January one, twenty twenty-six is fine. That's a, that's holiday. Yeah.
Okay, is that correct? Okay, so then my.
Can I, sorry, can I just ask for two clarifications? Um, Councilmember Craig, you commented on the sixty-five decibels for the backpack. Um, that's currently allowed and the seventy-four.
I, and I think both of them should be made sixty-four.
So was that part of your friendly amendment?
That was part of the friendly amendment.
And then to ask one more question, um, is it the intent that the change in hours as well as decibels? Also not be enforced until January first, twenty twenty-six?
Yes. Uh, just, just a sec. So, so. We are dialing back the hours for residents because currently they can. Go anytime, Monday through Friday.
Any daylight time.
Any, pretty much any time in the daylight.
Yeah. So now we're restricting that to nine to five.
After Jan one.
After Jan one, twenty twenty.
No, that's when we're enforcing it.
That's when we're enforcing it.
But we're putting it into effect when this goes live. But we're just not, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm good with that. That is what I understood it, the motion to be.
Sorry, just one more clarification. I apologize. Currently, Monday through Friday, allowed hours for. Contractors, which would then also be for homeowners come twenty twenty-six, is eight AM to five PM. Saturdays is nine AM to five PM.
No, weekdays nine to five. Weekdays and Saturday, nine to five, Sundays, ten to five. Which is our current time for Sunday, right?
That's our current time for Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, Saturday.
Currently, Monday through Friday starts.
Okay, ten AM Saturday, ten to five Saturday and Sunday.
I agree.
So ten AM to five PM Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, or no holidays?
Holidays.
And then Monday through Friday is eight AM or nine?
Nine to five.
Nine to five.
Contractors and residents.
And that's part of the.
Yes, it is.
And that was accepted by the maker of the motion?
Yes.
Uh, no, and the, and the second.
And the second.
Uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
No.
Vice Mayor Wolchimer?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor McGee.
Aye. Motion carries four, one, zero. With that.
Yes, you may. I think this is the perfect example of making a compromise, which is the law, card, and policy.
Thank you, guys. This was, this was very productive.
It's also a perfect example of all the foreign issues that I deal with.
All right, now we're on to item nine. Update from public works director slash city engineer on capital projects. This is information only, no action needed. And uh, a city engineer, Daryl.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
New truck.
Definitely a new truck and my partner, primary, Sarah, is working well tonight. Uh, three, three projects I just want to get you guys up to speed on that we're working on so that you're in the know of what's happening. First is our community center project. Uh, the preliminary con- conceptual design plans were provided to the city in July of this year. The community center subcommittee met on September twenty-eighth. Not long ago, it was, or last week, to review furnishings and color palettes. Staff will bring the findings. Of the committee to the next city council meeting for comment and direction by all of you. As, as far as construction plans, Cole, Stanton Associates are contracted to prepare the construction plans. The timeline for the first and middle plans is estimated to be the beginning of November next month. Once received, staff will review and comment to finalize the plans for fitting purposes. Uh, the estimated bid date is December to January, depending on the completion of the construction plans and specifications. That takes us to an estimated award for council approval by this body here in January, February of next year. Upon that approval, um, the estimated construction phase may be partially six to eight months, which would extend the project into the fall of next year before completion. That's our estimated timeline for that. Currently, our budget forecast for the community center is a one point two million dollar. Um, budget, which is reflected in our annual budget. Expenditures to date are partially a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars we've spent so far in designing piece. The budget includes a half a million dollar grant from S B Clean Energy Grants and also additional hundred and eighty thousand as well. Proposition sixty-eight funds. Any questions on that project at this point?
Okay.
Yeah, I.
Yes.
I don't know if you have, you know, to answer it or not. The S B grant of five hundred thousand, does that require billing start this year or does it go into next year?
That we have an extension on it. We don't need to serve for that one. That's.
Starts by December thirty. It could till December thirty-first, I believe, of twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah, we have all next year.
Okay.
So it's within our timeframe discussion. Second project, please. Dave's Avenue Escur project. Kimberly Horn and Associates, Associates has been contracted to complete the improved plans for the proposed safety project on Dave's Avenue. Completed plans were received at the end of August of this year. The engineers estimate for the cost of that is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. Staff has developed a preliminary outreach program. The outreach program may include a community center meeting, pop-up tent, listening sessions on site. At the location, resident letters, school parental notices, and adjacent homeowner one-on-one outreach, maybe knocking on doors. Once the outreach plan is finalized, outreach may take an estimated time of six to eight weeks. Once the outreach information is collected, staff will bring the project to the city council to discuss the community input. And ask council for direction and approval for any funding. The project has expended approximately thirteen thousand dollars of its fifteen thousand dollar design budget. Staff will need direction from council to approve the budget as an informal bid process to construct the project. Potential construct then would be in early spring of next year, whether committee. Any questions on that timeframe or what we've spent so far? Okay. Last project, please. Our green storm water infrastructure project. This project is funded through a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar value water conservation grant. The city has spent less than five thousand on the project thus far for soil and percolation testing. Both in our parking lot and on the other side of the building over here in the grassy area. The options for this grant include grassy swells along the southern border of the complex to collect rainwater. And allow for percolation and infiltration. The additional option is to add infiltration to the existing parking lot to my right, your left. Uh, along the north side of the complex. The landscape plans are being developed along with the community center plans that will show the grassy swell options. Staff will define the options for the pavement design alternative as well. So we'll take that on. I can do that myself, so. Both options will be available for estimating costs along the same time, timeline as the community center construction plans. Once the costs are identified, the bidding scope will be completed to allow for bidding for the community center project. Any questions on this portion of the project? Well, we're excited about getting these things moving forward. Have our new pickup truck here soon. We'll be on the go, so.
Okay, um, can we get a personalized license tag? Want to, you want?
Boss, can we look into that? All right, well, thank you. We'll keep you posted on how it goes.
Um, I will make a comment on this and uh, say thank you very much for. Bringing this forward because I think it's important that council understand, not, not just council. But I think our entire community understands what's ahead. And uh. I really think that with the Escur project in particular, the community outreach. And, and showing the involvement of our community and getting input from them is just so important in the city of Monte Serrino. And I know that that's not done by our adjacent municipalities, and I really see. Issues there that we should be able to avoid, and I commend you on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
And that was an information-only item. Uh, with that, we're on to. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we have to take public comment on this? Uh, what I'd like to do is if you're uh, appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. And uh, there's no one here in chambers. No hands raised. I'll close public comment on that. Thank you. Uh, that completes item nine. Uh, there is no new business, the committee commission reports. Councilmember Craig?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Lahey? Councilmember Turner?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Wolchimer?
Thank you. Um, I had an in-person meeting of the City Council Valley Home Water Control Authority, the first one, only the second one this year. Um, everything's going well with your organization. It's a well-run organization. The executive director has been there for twenty years and. I really admire the way they do their business. It's a, they all go on a shelter. It's a no-kill shelter. So they never euthanize animals unless they're really, really ill. One interesting fact is that they have a very nice financial reserve and. I thought it out to them that uh, they may be able to make a little bit more interest on that. So. They never hurt a ladder T-bills. So I. I wanted to ask Steve if they need help, pointing them in the right direction. And I give them your name. They, if they want to do the same thing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are happy to give them the information that we have. As far as we know, we will not be advising them what to do, but we could tell them what we did, which is all public information available. I'm happy to speak with them if you want to. Give them my phone, but it doesn't have to take long. It's probably a, having a phone call.
Certainly, thank you.
Uh, well, I've got a lengthy committee and commission report, and it uh, will be attached to the minutes. Um, and I want to start off by, by saying something. Oh, unfortunately, Diana's gone. Um. So. So I attended the swearing-in of five officers at Los Catos Monte Serrino P D. Uh last week. And I was amazed to learn that one of the officers. And his wife and family live in the city of Monte Serrino. And I asked the chief of police, how many, how afterwards, I asked, how many of your officers live in? Los Catos, and she said, one dispatcher. Lives in Los Catos. So if you say we're in a ten to one ratio or a nine to one ratio. We've got one officer in Monte Serrino and Los Catos should have nine and they've only got one, so I think that's a. I I'm just so proud of that and and in terms of our housing element and everything else, I think that that's really good.
And you you should call in here next time to do the. Pleasure for ladies.
But that's a great idea. That's a very good idea. Um and uh. Next week, I'm fortunate uh to have the opportunity to go on a tour of the White House of the East Wing. Uh that was confirmed. I I was hoping to see the West Wing, uh which is the operating side. But apparently uh there's activities underway that will prohibit me from from doing that. Um so it wasn't offered to me and then also uh uh going on a tour of the Capitol. Um and then the other thing that I'd like to point out is um. Costco pack five five six contacted me uh at the picnic and then they want to come. And visit and talk about uh city government uh here in Chambers. And I think that they're learning a badge for that. So that's kind of fun. Um and then. I think that that everything else in here, uh everyone's, you know, it's all it's all uh detailed. But the. There's there's what's going on uh and it's all good. So with that, uh do we have? Councilmember comments before the city manager report? Yes.
I have one comment. I graduated from the cert class last week, so. You know, I have two certain members on the council.
How long are you are you certified for before you have to be re-certified?
No real deadline, but there are regular uh updates that are that people are encouraged to attend.
Okay, and you know how many uh cert. Qualified people there are in the city of Monte Serrino?
No, no, no. Four people signed up for the class on your mom's show though. Very disappointing.
But I thought you and your wife were there. Put out of my mouth. Other comments?
No.
No, other comments? I will make a comment. Um as you see here, we have some COVID tests. And uh I know that there was a concern expressed by um. Uh councilmember Turner uh that COVID's coming back and we've got to be very cautious. And act prudently, and I saw that the county was offering these COVID tests and. Uh through city manager Leon Artis, we were able to direct uh staff to obtain. A hundred and eighty of these dual tests, so it gives you three hundred and sixty tests. Individual tests, and I probably went through three of these packages. And they're somewhere around twenty-five dollars each or something, so. Um this is is really good, and I just heard today that I've got uh friends in Santa Monica. And there are. Two people that contracted uh got COVID. So it's still around and I urge everyone to test themselves and if even if you're. Even if you think it's something a cold or whatever, please test yourself because we've got the test. So um with that, uh that's my, those are my comments and city manager Leon Artis, we have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one piece of information, uh the sixty-sixth annual children's holiday parade is coming up. December second, Saturday, eleven A M. I wanted you all to uh just mark your calendars for that. And staff will be working on putting together some ideas for a float for the city council. As well as for the youth commissioners.
They're gonna let back in?
I don't know. I haven't heard in the paper yet.
Oh, okay, that'll be fun.
I assume so, no, they reached out to me. I actually got the email four times. So uh that's that's it, other than I was going to mention the 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 COVID tests as well, they have to care about already.
Is this the one that we had others last year or?
Uh that is correct.
In the rain. It's already been a year now.
Rain or shine, in two months it will be one year. It's it time flies. I can't believe it's here already.
So. If you're gonna do comments, I'll do one. I just got back from New York and got flooded over there for the bus night. There's some of the flooded and flights were flooded, but. We made it, I made it back. So even New York has got drainage issues and flood issues, so the climate's really changing. Something needs to be figured out.
And I had one quick comment, um. And I I I only bring this up because of what happened in Saratoga last week. But when I attended the legal city's annual convention, they had a session on what the week did he just say? And it it was kind of entertaining because they were playing clips of different city councils and the stuff that people would come up and say. Uh but what it really got turned into was kind of a. A subsection of the Brown Act training because you really have to sit back in your chair and just listen. And you have to be very careful that you don't react to it, but I don't know. Maybe it might be worthwhile for us to kind of get a little refresher course on how to act when we have belligerent people. Yeah, I I saw that and I was, I saw your email and said, you know, we should probably be prepared because. It's going to happen to us soon. But yeah, it it was a, it was an interesting class, uh now looking at what happened there last week and. What's happening more and more around city councils. All right, uh with that, I will declare, I will adjourn the city council meeting. Uh of Tuesday, October third, I will adjourn it at nine eighteen P M.